Okay, we all sat here. We'll bring this meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. Welcome to a special meeting of the May 2, 2019, Manatee County School Board. And I'm going to ask that Mr. Kennedy lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Board Member Kennedy. Is there a motion to -- the Chair has found good cause to amend the agendas to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the May 2, 2019 Agenda, updated April 30, 2019, and posted to the district website, www-manateeschools.net? Is there a motion to approve?
Are moved.
So moved by Vice Chairman Messenger, seconded by Board Member Kennedy. Any discussion? Chair hearing, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it passes unanimously. Let me just say that we are being joined by telephone by Board Member Hopez. Can you hear me okay, Board Member Hopez?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I can.
Okay, we can hear you fine, okay? And you are filling the building with your wisdom here. Okay. First item of business is public comment. And I'm going to ask our distinguished Vice Chair Gina Messenger to lead that section of our meeting. Thank you very much.
Sure. We have two people signed up, and since they both know the routine, I don't think I need to go over the policy. I'll start with Mr. Gibleena, and then it'll be Mr. Daniel.
Good afternoon. My name is Bungee Lan for the record, citizen of Texas. To be at the bed, you ugly.
That's what I'm here to talk about. Let's talk about Accenture first, which is the company that we're going into negotiations with, PeopleSoft. They are a 49,000 employee company. They do work for the government. They are an excellent organization. But my concern is, we're here to okay $100,000 on a contract, and it's like, we're going to tell them what to do? They're a Fortune 500 company. They're going to tell you what they can do for $100,000. So that's my concern. This special meeting, not happy about it. I think you hit the nail on the head, Mr. Minor. You know, because there's a rush to do things and there's chaos and calamity, should not fall on the citizens to take a half a day off to come to a special meeting. This could have waited to the next agenda. This company actually should have been reached out to over at least a year ago. So I don't know what the big rush is. And here's my other concern, is that if you allow this this one time, and I have the utmost respect for Cynthia and the board here, that's not the point I'm trying to make. If you crack that door open, then you're telling the public, hey, we can have a special meeting anytime we want and push through any agenda and spend any money we want, and nobody's going to show up because it's going to be in the middle of the day when it's raining. That's a bad policy. This could have easily been waited. It should have been waited. It wasn't. My other concern is, you know, I've been working on affordable housing over at Wakeland. We were ready to do a proposal, and I had kept everybody in the loop, thought we were going to get some keys to look at it. And I go over there last week, and the building we're supposed to repurpose or think about repurposing is grazed. You guys just brought in a track hole and removed it. I put a lot of time and effort in this building. And I think the board member knew about my efforts, so I would like to know who pulled that trigger, who just came in there and just destroyed that building when we could have repurposed it for affordable housing. So I did a records request. I'm going to find out how long that contract was, and if it was signed prior to me doing there, I should have been notified of it. If it was signed after that I started it, then I just think that's uncalled for. There's no communication between the construction end of this and this. I'm just very disappointed in today's meeting. I'm devastated by Wakeland. You know, I put a lot of time and effort in trying to be a good steward and citizen of the school board, but I'll tell you, you're wearing me down.
Thank you. Mr. Daniel.
Mr. Chairman, members, Superintendent, my first comment regarding Accenture, it's about time. If we'd had this company when you first went into this effort, we wouldn't be here today. This is a company that came out of Arthur Andersen, was their consulting arm. I've also had the pleasure of working with them and implementing new software. When Sarbanes-Oxley came out, and public companies, they are excellent. The only question I have is, are you going into it too small? And I say that because feeding on his comments, these guys know what they're doing. And they could come in and do an analysis, I don't know what the scope of your contract is, and then help you to come up with building blocks to get to where we need to be. If we try to tell them what to do, it's going to be another failure. We need to rely on expertise that is qualified. He gave you some of the background. This company is excellent. It is the number-one implementation group in Oracle and PeopleSoft. Work on public, work on government, work on private, and I am just so thankful that you guys are getting there. But again, the thing I want you to realize is $100,000 doesn't do spit in a venture of this size and in an effort of this size with the confusion we've had. And I'm not saying to go farther in this contract, but to be prepared to let them come in and tell you why you may need to go farther with them to get this right. But again, I want to compliment all of you on this choice because they are an excellent company. I want to just say one thing on portables. You see them around. I know we move kids in and out. I know we move teachers in. There's new schools are there. We see that a lot of them are no longer needed at certain schools. Unfortunately, I've seen a bunch of them abandoned in place. ACs turned off, they're sealed up, and are just allowed to rot. And I would encourage you to stop doing that. There's other reasons, other things we can do with those buildings. There's other purposes, repurpose it, but to just turn off the air and let the black mold take over, I just can't see that. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you very much, Vice Chairman Messenger. Next item on the agenda for the special meeting is a motion to rescind approval to authorize the Superintendent to enter into agreement with Accenture not to exceed $100,000. The -- is there a motion to make that motion? Or is there some -- okay, the Chair recognizes Board Member Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I make the motion, I have three apologies that I'd like to make. First, I want to apologize to you. When this matter came up in public hearing, I stated forthwith at the very beginning of the discussion that I would not support the motion. And yet, the record clearly reflects that the motion to authorize the Superintendent to act passed four to one, which obviously included my vote. And so I apologize to you for that, and I appreciate the opportunity to be allowed to amend the agenda to allow me the opportunity to at least ask to have my vote rescinded or to at least have a vote to rescind. The second apology I want to make is to my fellow board members, the other members of this board. It is not my intent by asking for this to put anybody on the spot, to ask anybody to change your vote in terms of what you did before. I just hope that at the very least, I can get a second to the motion so that at least my conscience can be clear. It's very hard for me to just allow this to go by because I fully intended not to support the Chair, but to support the policy that we have in place. And so my third apology is to the public. I'm not up here trying to make it up as we go along. There's been a lot of work put into creating policies and procedures that make this school board work better. And I agree with, in part, with some of what the public comment says. There's no need to be rushing and doing things when we have policies and procedures that govern how we ought to act. And apparently, this is very plain. The motion that was made was that we, as a board, allow a departure from the policy that we have established. And I have no intention of supporting that. And I want the people who elected me and to whom I'm accountable to know that I'm not up here trying to make this up at every meeting as we go along. That doesn't make us a board, and it certainly doesn't make us progressive. And so I'm respectfully asking my colleagues to at least allow the motion to rescind to be voted on. And that is my motion. My motion is to rescind the approval to authorize the Superintendent to enter into an agreement with Accenture not to exceed $100,000. And lastly, I want to thank the Superintendent for waiting because by this particular motion that we approved two weeks ago or whenever it was, she could have already entered into this contract. And so I appreciate your giving us the opportunity. I won't say to do the right thing, but to do a different thing. And I thank you. So I -- that is my motion, that we rescind the approval that we gave to her in our last formal meeting to authorize the Superintendent to enter into an agreement with Accenture not to exceed $100,000.
Thank you, Board Member Golden. Is there a second to Board Member Golden's motion?
I'll second that. I believe that if you would like to change your vote, I respect that.
Okay. The -- I understand that Board Member Golden's motion has been seconded. Is there discussion? Board Member Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious what the -- what is our game plan for today? Because obviously, I got this first, the first, the motion to rescind. The second item on the agenda is consideration of a -- it doesn't say approval of a contract. It says consideration of a contract. So, Mr. Chairman, if you could just kind of address what -- or Superintendent, if you could address how -- and I'm asking because my -- the comments I made at the last meeting, I still stand behind. I'll go into that a little bit later, but I'm just curious, what is our game plan for right now for the next half hour?
I'll take the --
Mr. Chairman?
I'm going to take the privilege of responding at this time to Mr. Kennedy's comments. I think it might be more properly worded to say consideration of a contract, of a instead of the contract, because to my knowledge, there is no contract at this time between Manatee County School District and Accenture. Does that address your concern, Board Member Kennedy?
Yeah, okay, that clarifies, but what is the action that the board is taking then with this second item?
I think we're going to hear explanations from our Superintendent concerning, you know, efforts regarding seeking a contract with Accenture and discussion about that and how it might affect how we go forward. And, okay, the Chair recognizes Board Member Hopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the Superintendent and I have both had conversations with Accenture, and in light of the focus, the attention, the press, and at least the concern of the Chair and now Mr. Golden, the higher executives at Accenture have chosen not to contract with the district without a full procurement. Even though Accenture is allowed by state law and state procurement to enter into an agreement of this nature to do an assessment, they have chosen not to. So I think the Superintendent and the Chair will discuss next steps, but for the purposes of this vote, it's pretty much moot because Accenture has chosen not to contract with us without a full procurement process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Board Member Hopez. Is there any other comment that -- Board Member Messenger? You have a beautiful smile on your face.
I do.
Okay.
Just because I think we should go through a full procurement process. I have no problem with that. I think after this happened, I think some things came to light that made me uncomfortable with the fact that I'm hearing there's a board member that's specifically having conversations with this company when that's really our Superintendent's job. That causes me great concern, which is why I welcome this right now because I think if that's what we need to do, then that's what we should do so that it is done correctly.
Thank you, Board Member Messenger. Mr. Chairman, call the question. Board Member Golden, well, the Chair's not going to recognize the question at this time. The -- Board Member Messenger, excuse me, what?
I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Okay.
I -- my only single question is, if we choose to rescind this and go through the proper process, which at this point I now believe we should do, will that -- and we go through the proper process, let's say they are chosen, and that's a, you know, a maybe, if they are chosen, will this rescinding affect that in the future? And maybe that's a question for our attorney today, but will that affect future business?
Counselor?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes.
No, I don't see where legally it will affect you.
Okay. Great.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, the Chair recognizes Board Member Golden. He is asked to call the question. Did I hear you correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there discussion? Chair hearing, no discussion. We'll call the Board Member Golden's motion for a vote. All those in favor of Gold Members -- Board Member Golden's motion to rescind the approval to authorize the Superintendent to enter an agreement with Accenture not to exceed $100,000, said motion having been seconded by Vice Chair Messenger. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. The next item of business is consideration of the contract between Manatee County School District and Accenture. The Chair is going to ask if the Superintendent could share with us her comments regarding about this topic.
Yes, sir. I'm going to have Kelly put it up. Do you have to be at the podium so -- okay. She'll go at the podium so that I can speak from here. I really wanted just, since we knew that we were going to come back and have a meeting, and back to Charlie's topic, we do not have a contract, so I wanted to just lay out all the information. I started in conversation with Accenture on March 18th, over a month ago, as to a possibility of them coming and doing an analysis with our existing software implementation to let us know in terms of the modules that we've identified, their functionality, and what it would possibly take if they're not 100% completed, what it would take to finish the project or to realign it appropriately to meet the K-12 expectations in the state of Florida, and give us a timeframe and an estimated cost. That was number one. Number two, we've never -- we've had some training from Oracle reps to come in and work with our staff on how our staff could fully develop their own contract, I mean, their own reports or queries. We have a basic element, but they really are not proficient at doing their own reports. We really don't want to rely on other people giving them the reports they need when they want to pull data out of the system. So that was the second item. Since they are a very well-known PeopleSoft vendor, I needed an expert to sit side by side with a group of 10 to 12 people for two weeks and train them extensively on that. The issue we've had is, and in part, they've never worked in a K-12 implementation in Florida, so we've sent them the red book, we've sent them some items. I think they felt that they really needed to go through a whole scope of a normal procurement of an RFQ for them to get an actual bid on what I'm asking for so they could align their services adequately. So that conclusion was drawn Tuesday. So once that was told to me, I got our team together, and we started working on what that RFQ should read, and we're in the process of going through those steps. So we'll just move to the couple of slides here. In addition, so we'll go through the next one. So that's where we're working right now. In addition, we knew that we had some gaps in our BA department. That was noted, you know, in the internal audits report, et cetera. One of the things that we've done is we've gone back and looked in our IT internal department. We've realigned some resources that we have currently on staff, and we've added three additional people that have now moved into the BA functionality. We've posted those positions a number of times, and we've had a struggle on hiring adequate folks to fill those holes. And it's because of two things. If you're pulling somebody in from the outside, you're looking for someone with PeopleSoft knowledge because if they come in, we need them to be able to begin, or they have to have some sort of IT, K-12, state-of-Florida knowledge so that we're not sitting with months of just training them on what we're talking about. Since we've just not had any applicants that fit either one of those molds, we've gone in and we've looked at our own IT department, and we've moved a number of personnel there. So three additional people have started there this week. Our big focus right now is making sure that we're closing the year-end budget adequately. And again, there are pieces in our software that aren't completely aligned or configured to meet the K-12 reporting applications and roll forward that you need in our organization. So our service maintenance contractor is going back and realigning and reconfiguring it so that we're able to close out our books adequately. I will tell you, what is this month? End of April? We're closing our budget and financials quicker this month than we've had all year. So it's been labor-intensive, but in elements, it is improving because we're fixing things along the way. I do think it's important for us to get an analysis, though, of what is left to be fixed. And that is what we're looking at, and in terms of budgeting for next year. We do know that our PeopleSoft version is able to hold a budget once it's put into the system. We don't have the mechanisms in it to build a budget, but we've -- we're building a budget with other software that imports in, and that's Forecast 5. It was built by K-12 CFOs in the state of Florida that does all the reporting, graphs, visuals that are needed so that we can make sure that we're in compliance with our DOE guidelines. So that's very hopeful, and all the data imported into that came straight from the state for the last three years. So that's going very well. We feel very confident on implementing our budget for next year, and we do feel confident that we'll be able to close out. We just don't have all the pieces in place yet. So we've already discussed that we need to go to an RFQ, and what that looks like is I'm going to give you the timeline of that process. And know that once it goes out to bid, it means that it's open for anybody that meets these qualifications that are also interested. Did I miss? Am I off-cycle? Go back one. Okay. Before we go to the timeline, I wanted you to see the modules. That's good. I wanted you to look at the modules that we're emphasizing and we're writing in the RFQ. We're not looking at an analysis right now on campus solution. If we feel we need to go out to bid on that separately, we would. We were concerned if we put both of them together that it might be problematic in getting anyone to respond because not everybody has an expertise in both of those systems. So right now, our main focus is ensuring that we're looking at those elements within that first box. I think it's somewhere around 20 modules, give or take. Then we have the modules for campus solution. You'll see the ones in red are the ones that we're trying to work on now that we're having difficulty with. And then you'll see those over to the far right that we're looking at not utilizing all of next year, in part because we're not using them in some cases right now, or that we're having great difficulty implementing and using those. Our main objective right now is to see the status of the modules that are essential for us having the process and the ERP functioning. We need them quick to roll into the July 1 school year, operating much better than we did this past year, but also, we've got to be very cost-effective. We know not that -- I'm not saying that we weren't mindful of our budget prior, but the dollars used moving forward will come out of our operational budget. So we are trying to be very good stewards of the money and making a very strategic way of fixing the project with the best use of resources and the best timeframe of the resources. So remember, a lot of this has to do with coding, which is not any employee that works on in our district. These are services that have to be contracted out. So we want to ensure that we're picking the essential ones so that we're properly functioning with a minimal cost to the district. Taleo, we've already spoken about that prior. That's already embedded in our maintenance contract vendors, so that expense is already done. We've done an extensive vetting and consulting with Seminole County as well as the University of South Florida, both of which use PeopleSoft, and Seminole County Public Schools. And we are trying to emulate some of the things they have that are more efficient and a little more timely. The PeopleSoft HR module within what we've bought really lends to be more functional than the Taleo piece that we've had for a few years that sits outside of the system that imports in. We know that a lot of our problems that we've had have been payroll errors, and part of that is feeding that system in with funding chart strings and so forth. When we build the product of the HR product within the PeopleSoft, no one will be keying in chart strings of funding sources. It will be built in behind the scenes. So that right there is going to fix a lot of our problems. Some of the problems that need to be fixed are coding. Some of it is processes as well. The other thing that we know that we're having trouble with is our grant module, and we've known that that's been difficult since the very beginning. No one else is using it. So we need to come out with a different process. So that, we're going to go back and kind of follow what University of South Florida's doing because how many more resources do we need? Because how many more resources do we need to spend on that when we know no one else is using it and we're still struggling a year after the implementation? Internal funds, I need to be clear because sometimes I speak the wrong language. When I, I'm not talking about internal billing that we need within that module and that's almost finished being built with our maintenance provider. Schools in a K-12 medium have their own fundraising mechanism and they're called internal funds. Athletics, activities, they raise funds for certain things. No one uses the element within PeopleSoft. We've also called other districts that use SAP, which is an Oracle product, a little bit larger in some of the larger districts than PeopleSoft. Orange County uses it as well as Broward. They don't use the internal fund piece for fundraising at the schools. I will tell you, the bookkeepers are struggling with it. They can't get proper reports. They can't use it. The teachers are struggling getting what they need out of that functionality. So after a year and you do your proper investigation, you say, "We probably don't need to use that anymore." There's a cheaper, easier solution that we'll import in and that's what we're going to move to. So we've had many conversations with bookkeepers, with teachers. I met with all the MEA building reps. We've talked to other districts. We've been using the product for almost a year. I think we know what pieces we need to scale back on, what pieces we need to change, and what pieces we need to change our own internal processes to make the system work better. I will tell you one thing, and we're not getting rid of it, but we're going to change our process. And that's P-cards because we've been having a lot of problems still with P-cards. But part of that is our own design. We have set up some of those processes that have been very labor-intensive. So right now, the big, large box to the left are the ones that we just would like a third lens to give us an estimate, give us an analysis. From there, we will vet that. Come back to the board if we do deem that we need to contract with somebody to fix it. And then we'll go out for an RFQ on that. So whenever somebody's coming in for this one, it's not to give us an analysis and fix. We need to get, do our due diligence, get that information, then make the next decision. I think we've all learned a valuable lesson from our AG analysis. And we're just going to make sure we do all the proper steps that we should do before we reach a negotiated contract with someone. So I wanted to give you kind of a tentative timeline on what the RFQ process is. As you can see, we would be able to have our decision by May 21st, which would give us proper time to come back for board approval on May 28th. So then I should have a proper contract of doing the analysis of the system. But I won't have one before then.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Superintendent Kennedy. Any questions, comments?
Board Member Golden.
Yes, of course. This is Superintendent.
And I know I'm not going to say this technologically correct, but I hope you can get what I'm driving at. We're about to go out and get an RFQ that we're going to start working with maybe as soon as May 28th. But we are also approaching the end of that first year that you were talking about with a closing-out part to it.
Yes, sir.
So my question is, are we able to include in what we seek now the input that would be gained from knowing or not knowing whether the closing-out is going to be as we need it to be or if it's going to be problematic? Or are they separate processes?
That's a very good question. I will tell you that that will be part of our discovery. And in some cases, the reconfiguring or coding could have been done by the time they come and it could have already been fixed. In some cases, we do what we need to do to close the book, to get all the information, but yet you still have to go back and do some reconfiguring. So sometimes we can get the result we're looking for, but it doesn't mean we have fixed the system. And I'm going to give you an example. We pulled the data that we needed for the W-2s, but we still have to go back and recode all the, some of those processes for this next year. We gave the immediate result of what we needed to get out of the system, but it's not all configured properly for just a routine operation of the system. So that year-end process, we'll be able to close it. We still want an analysis is, are there still things that could be done better for workflow or proper alignment so that it's an easier process the next year? Or is it already, is it already resolved? Because while we're waiting on this, we're still back there making some corrections and doing things because you have to. You know, maybe it's going to be a perfect world. By the time we get to it, maybe there, it won't be as extensive as what it would have been. But I still think it's important to do.
But it is going to be a part of
Yes.
first, what do you call it, RFQ?
Yes, sir. It is, it is in part of that. Yeah.
Because we now will have the year-end information.
Yes, sir.
And we can then analyze that in terms of whether we need to fix it for the end of next year.
Correct. Yes.
That's my point.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good point. Board Member Golden. Any other comments, questions? Board Member Kennedy.
Thanks, Mr. Martin. So we will have, you clarified nicely, Superintendent Saunders. So by the May 28th board meeting, we will have up for board approval the RFQ for the analysis of what needs to be done. So I guess my concern is, all right, I just want to clarify. And Dr. Grusso, I may borrow your expertise for a second if I'm saying anything that, if I'm quoting anything wrong. But part of the internal audit report was that we, like with the patch, for example, there was some concern about getting our end-of-school-year reporting done. Like, long story short, there's a possibility we might miss out on some funding if we didn't have certain work done.
Well, that work, we will have it done, but that still doesn't mean that the system has all the complete functionality.
Into the future.
Right, into the future.
Okay, gotcha.
So we still may need some work. But when they do that analysis, if there's any updates, offer update, patches, et cetera, all of that should be in the report we receive of things that are still needing to be put in place, a timeline and a estimated cost as to do all that scope of work, is what we're looking for.
Yeah, and I, I'm okay with that process. I just, you are confident that between the May 28th approval and the close of business, the close of business on June 30th,
Yes.
that we are not going to be late reporting, which will lead us to lose funds.
Correct.
Great. Okay. That's all I was worried about. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Kennedy. Any other comments, questions? Board Member Vice Chair Messenger.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
I know that one of the things that when the board first approved this project way back when, I think they were told, you know, things wouldn't be customized. And I think the last time we heard, you know, some things were customized. And the fear is that that will make future upgrades more difficult. And so my question is, is that something that this company will look at as a way to perhaps, I don't know if the word is fix, but alter to make sure that things are more as they should be and less customized, as least customized as possible so that when we do an upgrade, you know, undo if something has been done or find a different workaround? Or is that something that's also going to be part of this RFQ?
The language in there was put as these modules are out of the box or functioning as such. But in some cases, there had to be some customization to fit. And I used the campus solution. The system was not designed to configure like a technical college did. So unless they did some configuration, it would not operate. I do think there's going to be some changes we're going to have to make internally so that we aren't implementing customization. But those are internal decisions that we will discuss and we will put in place. Hopefully, we'll come to a consensus of that. And we'll put those in place July 1 so that we can make whatever fixed corrections so that it is not customized. And I think that is the expectation.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Board Member Kennedy.
Oh, Mr. Hope, just one second. I just have a quick one. I just wanted to kind of concur with what Mr. Daniel had to say. I am not in the IT business and consulting, but I have known of Accenture for about 20 years. So if they are the company that comes out on top, I mean, I agree, this is a Fortune 50 company, probably, you know, leader in the industry. So, you know, we've had trouble finding folks willing to do this work. So it's nice to have a, or it hopefully will be nice to have them as a partner to help fix this up.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Board Member Hope? Did you have a comment or a question?
I wanted to address, and Mr. Kennedy put it well, that Vice Chair Messenger's comments so that you better understand both the role and the time I have put into this since the superintendent took over on July 1 of last year. Aside from the fact I have considerable expertise in this area, the principal role that I have been playing lately is to convince companies that have the competency and capacity to help us because many of the firms that have that expertise have not wanted to touch it because of their risk of not being successful. Secondly, mentoring the superintendent. As you've just heard her so wellly articulate and understanding and insights into this, it has not come without a lot of mentoring and coaching by others as well as me. But give me the benefit of more than 35 years of experience working in government agencies in Florida, sitting on public boards of government agencies in Florida, and going through procurement that I know my role as a board member with regards to preparing for procurement and what role a board member must not play during that process. So I would appreciate a little bit of respect for my experience and the work that I've been doing with the superintendent to motivate one of the top firms in this world to even consider bidding on the project. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Board Member Hope.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Board Member Golden.
I move adjourned.
Second.
I have some comments myself. I'm not going to recognize that motion at this time.
Okay. Okay. I will draw my motion.
Thank you. You're good at that. Okay.
I'll withdraw my second.
Well, that's all right. I will draw my motion then. Go ahead.
Thank you, Board Member Golden. Topic one. The approval of the first motion, you know, to rescind what was done recently, should not be taken as any disrespect for our superintendent. I don't think there's any board member who doesn't have the greatest respect in the world for what our superintendent has been doing for this school district. Her hard work, her intellect, her dedication to the children and the employees of this district, I could not be exceeded by anyone. To my knowledge, and I think everybody who goes through, is on the board and goes through our board briefings, appreciates the breadth of the dedication that we've had from our superintendent. I think that what this motion reflects is what we did before was not a good way to, you know, speed bringing in assistance, you know, to our district. It was made in good faith. It was thought that by, I think, those who voted in favor of it, that departing from what we've always done would somehow, you know, bring about a quick contract like within days. We haven't had any offer. We haven't really had communication. That was a false hope. And we learned from it. And our meeting today and the vote, you know, five to nothing, reflects, we learned from it. It's not the way to go about it. We look forward to responses to the RFQ. Maybe we won't get any, but I think we will. But that's the better way to go about it as far as the next step. So I just, I'm saying that I hope that nobody in this community misinterprets, you know, this vote as in any way a disrespect of anything that the superintendent is doing and going about things. Second thing is that, and Board Member Hope's addressed it, and Board Member Messenger brought it up concerning the role of board members in the contract avenue of our board in the business. The, what I had always learned, and I'm going to ask our board attorney to, you know, comment on this, is that, you know, board members should not, should not, despite their expertise, despite their great knowledge, despite everything about them, should not be involved when we're trying to make contract with folks. Providing knowledge, you know, to the superintendent, that's great. It should be applauded that one of our board members does that. But getting into something that might be interpreted as negotiation, you know, with vendors, I've always been told is absolutely rebating. And it complicates the business of our administration. And if I'm wrong, and I, if our council says I'm just wrong, okay. But that's what I've always been told. And I've always learned that from, you know, Jim Di. And I think that we need to adhere to it, each one of us. So that's, I'm going to ask Mr. Di to comment on what I just said.
Thank you, Chair. No, you are not wrong. Individual board members do not have any authority to take action on their own. The individual board members certainly have the right as a citizen to access to people and events. But unless the board gives one of the members authority to take action on behalf of the board, no individual board member would have any such authority. No.
Okay. Well, thank you, your councilor. Now, I thought I heard a moment ago a motion by Board Member Golden to adjourn. Is there, there's a second by Board Member Kennedy. Is there any discussion? The chair hearing none. We will close the meeting now. Thank you all for being here.
My imagination of the guy, he a baby crying.
I see you did. She's in there. It's mine.